Goff to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. For November second, two thousand and twenty. All of our counselors except Ms. Nosler Becker with us tonight. Thank you all for being here. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The item number one is the master plan. For the existing SCL Lutheran Hospital Campus. And number two is a short term rental ordinance. We began our meeting tonight as we do most of our meetings with citizens' right to comment. Any citizen make may join us at this time to speak on any of the agenda items only. For three minutes. If you're joining us in the Zoom format down at the bottom of your screen, you'll see a an icon called Participants. If you'll click on that icon. The next screen will have. At the bottom right, a raise hand icon. If you would click on the raise hand feature. That will that will alert our associate to Ms. Check that you wish to speak and she will bring you into our meeting. And if you are on the telephone, we will we will ask you to unmute your. Either your phone or you can press star six. In order to join the meeting, so. We will go to our citizens' right to speak. Miss Check, is there anyone with their hand up in the Zoom format?
Yes, Mayor, we have Carrie Whitaker.
Okay, Ms. Whitaker, would you please unmute yourself? Give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name and give us your address, then you may continue. And you will have three minutes.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Carrie Whitaker. That's six, six, three, zero, West Thirty Eighth Avenue. And I was calling to talk.
Mr. Whitaker, we just we just lost you.
Okay, my apologies. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Thanks so much.
Okay, so in looking at the memo memo on short term rentals. First concern is it looks like trust partnerships and corporations can own short term rentals in Wheat Ridge. I guess my question, how do how many are they allowed to own? How do we manage occupancy with these types of entities? And do we really want Expedia owning short term rentals in our city? Also, just a couple of technical issues. It does reference the term contract with short term renters. I'm not sure if every business out there has no contract. But we'd recommend updating that safe contract or agreement. Regardless of the parking provisions, it does talk about how short term rentals of the zoning is correct need to have a space. But there's no requirement that that space be used. Maybe something good to add. Also, in regards to revoking a short terminal license doesn't. This doesn't state why a license may be revoked. Imagine the licensees may want to know that. And then lastly, there's nothing in here on caps or density. So I think that's a topic that needs to be addressed. And those are the new topics. As far as old topics that we discussed at the April Study Session. I don't see any tool disciplinary tools outside of revoking a license in here. Last time we talked about. Summary suspensions, cease and desist orders and fines. And my question with the current language is. What action can the city take against a short terminal that isn't licensed? The answer is none right now as it's written. That's why you need all those other tools. There's also no complaint process. That was discussed. And then there is nothing in there. Unlimited or minimum night stays. So I think. In the April session, Zach talked about how he didn't want any one night stands in Wheat Ridge. And I think the city council agreed with that, voted five to three to adopt that. And there's nothing in here on that. And so those are all the topics that I wanted to raise tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Whitaker, Ms. Check, do we have additional hands in the Zoom format?
No, Mayor, I'm just unmuting the phones in case they'd like to speak up, but I don't see another any other hands in Zoom.
Okay, if you were on the telephone and would like to join us for citizens' right to comment on any agenda item, please speak up.
Christine Jessup. I don't know if you can hear me. Hello?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, I I I'm Christine Jessup. And I reside at sixty seven thirty West Thirty Eighth. And I'd like to give you a comment. I think rezoning would hearings would be. In order for each B and B because they're zoned as residential houses. And we need them to be zoned as businesses if they're going to act as a business in our county and in our city. Hopefully you hear this. I'm a lifelong resident of Free Ridge. My father was a builder here and when he'd get a house ready to be built, he'd go get a permit. And the correct zoning, if it was going to be a duplex or a triplex. People are taking their basements and turning them into duplexes and that's not correct and not right. We've had issues with the B and B on our street just being a plain rude person. And nasty to the neighbors. I'd like to see all B and Bs just stopped because they're illegal and. They never got the zoning done on them. To be a business. We don't want business in our residential area. I'd like you to know that if you lived by one, you wouldn't like it either. So please just eliminate them, close them up. I don't know if you know that they're being used to deal drugs out of. The drug dealer will come in on a certain day, call up all his buddies and they're coming in and out and. Way they go and then they're checked out the next day so they can't get caught. They're using them as massage parlors. I think we've had enough. So just let's shut them down. You have the zoning in effect right now to do so. But you guys are all chicken. You want to accommodate them. They don't even pay you any taxes. So let's get it together. I think you're wasting your time on these study sessions. Close them up. And I think everybody would be real happy campers. Okay, I thank you for your time. You guys all have a great night. Thanks.
I wanted to confirm that we heard all of your all of your comments. So thank you very much. Ms. Check, another speaker tonight.
Mayor, I don't see any other hands up in the Zoom format and we do have a caller that's unmuted if they'd like to say.
Okay, I'll ask one more time if there's any more members of the public who would like to join us for citizens' right to speak. Now is your opportunity. If you will unmute yourself and speak up. We will invite you into the meeting. Okay, I don't hear anyone. So we will close our citizens' right to speak. We'll go to our agenda item number one. This is the master plan for existing SCL Lutheran Hospital Campus. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn it over to Ken Johnstone. I believe Lauren Miklech is also here to speak to it. Maybe she's going to introduce it. Ken, did you want to introduce Lauren first?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. Lauren Miklech, our planning managers, is going to handle this one. So I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening. In your packet for tonight's meeting, we had a memo regarding the future of the Lutheran campus. Joining me tonight are also two representatives from SCL Health, Grant Wicklund, the CEO of SCL's Lutheran Medical Campus, and Stephen Chung, the Senior Vice President of Real Estate for SCL. They're here to to answer any questions you might have about their operations and plans. But before we get to questions, I'm just going to give a brief overview. Of the campus history, the zoning and the future. The campus, I know is familiar to many of you, but I am going to share a few aerial images just for reference. So let me share my screen here quickly. And we can get started. Can you see that?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. So this image is a two thousand and eighteen aerial. And the property that outlined in blue is the largest extent of what SCL and their predecessor Exempla own. And as you know, the Lutheran Medical Center has been central to our city in both its location and as one of our major employers. That's about a hundred acres in size, extending from Thirty Second Avenue to Thirty Eighth Avenue. And you can see Wattsworth just on the right side of your screen. The two primary streets interior to the site are both publicly accessible, but they're not actually public streets. You can tell that in this image because all of our public streets are outlined in red. The majority of the medical uses you can see in this image, oops. Are on the northern part of the site. And I think as many of you know, and you saw in the memo, medical use has actually began on this property decades before the city existed. In nineteen oh five, starting as a sanitarium for tuberculosis treatment. And today, the property now has hundreds, if not thousands of people on the site sort of on a daily basis. From a zoning standpoint, we know it's always a little funky when buildings predate the city and predate our zoning. But we cleaned that up in nineteen ninety. The city legislatively rezoned the property. To a planned hospital development and that zoning is shown here in the blue color, which covers the vast majority of the property. SCL also purchased the Foothills Medical Office Building, which is at the top. Left, the northwestern corner of the property. That's the gray color. It's on planned commercial development. And then on the western edge, Exempla has long owned, sort of prior to SCL being in the picture, long owned properties that were plotted for single family homes, but never developed on their western edge of the property. For the PhD zoning, that hospital designation, the zoning code is actually. Very, very prescriptive and very limiting in terms of the land uses that can be located in his own district. It's essentially just hospitals, hospice care, and any accessory use customarily associated with a medical campus. In our comprehensive plan, this image comes from the comprehensive plan. You can see the campus here. The Lutheran campus is shown in that image as a public use. That's the blue shading. And also denoted by the asterisk as a major employer and job center. And the site is described sort of verbally throughout the comprehensive plan as being a well established community and neighborhood anchor. And the plan didn't consider any potential reuse because that simply wasn't on the radar at the time in two thousand and nine. So fast forward to more recent years. SCL Health became associated with the Lutheran campus in two thousand and ten when they joined Exempla. And you'll recall that they were not the original partner at Clear Creek Crossing. But after UC Health left that project a few years ago, SCL partnered with Evergreen to be our anchor employer out there. And in two thousand and eighteen, they purchased twenty six acres at Clear Creek Crossing. And that property is obviously quite a bit smaller in land area, but presents an opportunity for SCL to replace aging facilities with a new medical campus. So while there are a couple of services that may remain at the Lutheran campus, SCL recently shared with our staff that they're planning to market a majority of the Lutheran campus. As I mentioned, the zoning here is really exclusively allowing for medical uses and the comprehensive plan reflects the same. And for reuse of this property of nearly any kind, a zone change would be necessary. And for a zone change to be supported, we really need a guiding document in place. And so what we are proposing tonight is to create that guiding document. In the form of an eight month public process to create a master plan that is very specifically for this site outlined in blue. That process and the resulting plan would help to create a shared vision between the city, the neighbors, the current owner, and any future owner of the campus. We recommended this approach to SCL. We've had a few conversations back and forth over the last month or so. They've been a good neighbor to our community for the last hundred years and have expressed their desire to continue to leave a positive legacy. And certainly, time is critical to them, but they understand the importance of having a plan in place, which ultimately helps our community and helps them to market their property more accurately. So up to now, what we've discussed is the potential for our staff to manage a master planning process. For that process to be facilitated by a third party planning firm and for SCL to fund the project. You know, SCL's desire to market the campus, I think, is occurring a little bit sooner than we had expected. So moving forward with the master plan for the campus could happen relatively quickly. We think we could move. Through consultant selection and maybe kick off even as soon as the first quarter of next year. That would assume that we continue to wait on our Forty Fourth Avenue Plan. You'll recall that that project has been delayed into two thousand and twenty one largely because of the COVID impacts to our budget. We can't, from a staffing standpoint, we probably can't manage both of those projects at the same time, but we can certainly do them one after the other. And in this case, we'd be proposing. To do the Lutheran plant first and then Forty Fourth Avenue. I noticed today, as you probably saw as well, that there were five comments. On this agenda item in Wheat Ridge Speaks, and I think that really is a good testament to the need for a public process and creating a shared vision for the future of this property. So we're here tonight to answer any questions that you may have and specifically seeking a consensus from you to move forward with the master plan. If that's your direction, then we would be back in front of you in the beginning of next year to award a contract to a planning firm. That is everything I have. So I'll stop sharing and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have along with Grant and Stephen and Ken.
Thank you very much. We will go to questions from council. Or comments or anybody have a question, comments? Ms. Weaver, Ms. Hoppy and Mr. Stites.
Lauren, did I hear you correctly that Lutheran would fund this this planning consultant?
That's what we've asked SCL to partner in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ms. Hoppy.
I just wanted to comment that I look forward to the partnership. To be able to bring this to our community and then for us to be able to figure out a future plan. And I think with the SCL Health paying for the change in the master comp plan. It's kind of a no brainer. And so I'll be supporting for this to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I agree with everything Ms. Hoppy just said. I did have a question. How does this master plan and how this goes forward? How does that fit in with the neighborhood engagement tour specialists? Is that going to be something that we think about making a part of it as well?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we have intentionally not sort of scheduled what the next neighborhoods would be in an effort to always be nimble with that program. So what? What we had previously thought of when we when we thought we'd be doing Forty Fourth First was to not. We don't want neighbors to get planning fatigue. So we'd probably ask the neighborhood to sort of focus on the master plan and then do the let's talk tour for those neighborhoods afterwards and not do them at the same time. It's hard to do competing planning efforts in one geography.
Yes, as I was campaigning last year and kind of walking through those neighborhoods around there. Obviously, there's a lot of excitement because they see what could happen, but there's also is obviously a lot of nervousness too. With the fact that a lot of those neighbors are going to get a lot of new neighbors probably. So the more public this process can be, the better. So yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also am excited to see the city stepping up and moving this forward quickly. I know that Forty Fourth Avenue has been pushed out again and again. Over the years and oftentimes for good reasons, and this is, I think, yet another good reason for it. But I'm just curious because we, if I remember correctly, we were actually under contract with a contractor to move forward with that. Would we be? Can would we hold on to that contract and ask them to wait? Or would you be considering opening that up again?
Up to now, we've been putting them on hold and not not terminating the contract with them. They wouldn't be precluded from applying for this or any other project with the city, but that's the current status with that consultant.
Okay, and Councilmember Stites took my other question. So thank you for jumping jumping on that. I do, having attended one of the Bel Air. Let's talks as well as one of the southeast Wheat Ridge, I know in Bel Air. The the future use of the Lutheran site is actually a really important topic to them. I know in my own. Meetings that I've had, even though it's not our district and district two, it's their favorite topic, or at least it was last year. So. I realize that that's it's not really, you know, overlapping planning. But I think it probably is useful for the residents in Bel Air who abut against that. Site to at least be informed during those conversations that it's coming so they can be sort of thinking. About that. I think most people are aware of it and already thinking about that, but knowing that the city is actually moving forward would be useful for people because it's on their minds. So I'm definitely in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I did just want to remind council that the Forty Fourth Avenue. Plan was not in our budget. It was in our future wish list for the second half of the year, once we see kind of how the. How our revenues are. So so, you know. This, I think this is a good use of our staff currently while utilizing funding from somewhere else. But I agree, I really look forward to the Forty Fourth Avenue Plan getting done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What kind of outreach radius are we looking at as far as notifying neighboring property owners for this master plan process? And how do we expect to engage them?
We have not gotten quite that far along. I mean, certainly, it's a big campus with a big impact. So I don't think I think it'd be a fairly large area. And probably not even just immediate neighbors. What we have talked about is sort of the ability to move forward, not knowing what what engagement can look like in person or virtual. We've got a testament to the fact that we've had really good engagement already in our first couple of months of let's talk. And I'm excited about the opportunity to potentially bring people onto the site, just sort of boots on the ground, feel what it is, how close it is to their neighborhood. So. A critical component of our consultant selection process will be how what they propose to engage our. Neighbors in this community in a very meaningful way, but we haven't gotten quite to the detail of the radius distance.
Sure. And as you mentioned about the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments, obviously, it doesn't take much to get word out that Lutheran is seeking to, you know, develop a master plan and that. That in of itself should drive people out to participate. But I just want to make sure people are made aware of and that were. Because it is such a large campus that we extend that radius larger than we otherwise would because it is so impactful. The other question is about special districts, the fire protection, the water district, the sanitation district, and. The impacts on those districts as it relates to redoing this campus and understanding how they are fit into the mix as well.
Yep, and it's a good comment. We actually, we meet quarterly with every water sewer and fire district, and we met with them two weeks ago and put them on notice that this may be coming. So we'll we'll need to coordinate with them to understand. It's a big area. It's about twelve city blocks to understand what their infrastructure capacity needs are.
Thank you, Mayor. Lauren, thank you for sending that to me today. Yes, so in nineteen ninety, this development became a PhD planned hospital development, correct? So when you're doing the master plan, is that going to completely change everything that is in there as far as allowances? Because it certainly does say no residential development, for one thing. And then it's very specific about what types of things can be there. My concern is. This is the largest area of employment in Wheat Ridge. I am interested in what's going to happen to West Pines. Also, the medical buildings. There's a lot of doctors' offices, dentists that are in there and. Are they going to stay or not going to stay? Does SCL, they own all those? They even that the foothills one to the west, they own that. And so there's like at least four, I think, medical buildings. West Pines is a concern. There's also a house that's on the east side. A lot of history things there. The Blue House has been there forever. So these are, I mean, it's, I I'm interested, the master plan, is this going to turn this into like a Belmar? Is that what we're looking for?
Well, it's a good question of sort of how does a master plan relate to the zoning? And I didn't cover that in detail. And essentially, the master plan would cover at a very conceptual level, sort of what land uses do we want? What land uses? Can the does the market want? What land uses can the utilities support? What land uses impact our traffic? So it it presents, the master plan would present a conceptual framework for the types of uses that we want to see. And once we have consensus and the community has been involved and SCL has been involved and the development community has been involved and our utility providers have been involved. Then we have a document that we can point to when a zone change application comes in. And I think. The key here is to do the eight ish months of community building and visioning. So we have a consensus. So frankly, planning commission and councils in the future. Have a really solid basis for making decisions on zone changes or subdivisions or site plans or whatever those documents would be. I do expect that it could very likely be a planned development in the future because it is a big and unique site. But you don't have a document right now to approve a zoning. So. This document will not be the zoning, but it will give you a good basis for making zoning decisions in the future. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. But I am, we have people here from SCL. I would like to. See what they say about the medical buildings and West Pines. As I understand Collier is going to stay there. Is it? Yes or no? You don't know? I think the community needs to be involved like way at the beginning here of what's going on because. It isn't just people who live around that area. That is centered to all of Wheat Ridge. People have been so used to it and all the employment that's there. That is a concern for me, you know, so. If the SCL people could answer those questions.
Lauren, do you want me to go ahead and jump in here then?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so let me take one of those, each of those at a time. So with respect to the medical office buildings. The three largest are owned by a by Ventas Lily Bridge. So we do not. Own those. And so they'll go through a process in determining. What they what what the sort of what they want to do with those those buildings. So most likely, there'll be some physicians that. Will continue to stay there, but you know, to be to be transparent, they're the physicians that. Are hospital centric and associated with us will be constructing new medical office buildings. On the new campus. And so those doctors will come with us. And so there'll be some. Emptying out of those medical office buildings and Ventas Lily Bridge will figure out. What they want to do with those spaces, but they are valuable buildings and they could be medical. They could be repurposed for something. Else. The the Foothills Building, which is along Thirty Eighth, is the one that we own, and that's a very valuable asset because it's not so much. Centric to the hospital per se, and it is good access for the community itself. So we are, we are investing and will continue to invest in that. Foothills Building and, you know, we're putting in primary care. And a lot of other services that will be good for the city of Wheat Ridge. So that will stay. We do have a medical office building that is. Proximate to the hospital and quite frankly, the infrastructure around that is just not worth investing and we're not really using that. As medical office building. So that'll come down as that will no longer exist as we repurpose the hospital. Hospice, the hospice Colliers will stay. So that will not be part of what we're considering to redevelop. As it relates to West Pines. That building is the infrastructure of that building is antiquated and old. So. We are looking currently looking for, and it wouldn't make sense for us to reinvest and rebuild that infrastructure on that campus. So. We are currently looking for other partners to help us run that facility and potentially other locations, but that is work in process. I think you also asked about things like the Blue Building and that has important historical significance to us. It's a part of our legacy. And so I think one of the things that we're looking at is. Can we actually? Put it on the, you know, take it. can we actually put it on, you know, take it and move it to a different location just because of its historical significance? And I think that's kind of the working hypothesis right now is where else can we locate that, that, the, the, the blue, the Blue House, I think is what we call it. So that's as, you now know as much as we know about in terms of what we think will sort of stay and what will most likely not be there as part of the new, the new, the Lutheran Legacy Campus.
I do have another question. Thank you. So if West Pines wasn't going to stay there or whatever, what is SCL's commitment to mental health?
Yeah, um, you know, it's obvious, I, I think as when we do our community assessments, we are committed to behavioral health. It's something that is, is important to us and it's something that we see as a community need. I think, you know, as it relates to the, that particular building and the infrastructure, it just, it is not, it is just not viable for the long term. So we just can't continue to put money back into that building. And I, I honestly, I don't have an answer in terms of where are the new, those new facilities and who our partner's going to be at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Lauren, you actually kind of went in to the question that I had a bit. So this is just gonna be a conceptual design of what we would like to see at the site. And if there needs to be rezonings, we would address those separately at a future time. And so this is really kind of what I foresee as what we went through for Anderson Park, where we had a lot of public input meetings and people talked about the amenities and, and things that they wanted at the park and we kind of like whittled it down. And, and then we created a, a actual blueprint of the plan, so that's, it's gonna be kind of similar to that.
It'll be similar. It won't probably be quite as detailed, so it's similar maybe to some of our sub-area plans. When we bring a zone change to you, we, one of our criteria, we say, here's what the comprehensive plan calls for, and this zone change is supported by the comprehensive plan. We, that's the gap that we have now. So it will be more similar to our comp plan with sort of blobs of color on this, you know, the, the property that says we could have office here, we want to transition in this way to the neighborhood, we're thinking about heights, we have a general sense of sort of traffics, roadways could support a change in, in traffic. So it will not get to the point of like a road grid necessarily or building locations, that will come in the next step. But it will be similar to the Anderson process in terms of saying like, love it, hate it, you know, want to have open space. Market wants to bring office, sort of a variety of land uses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions from Council? Not seeing any. Council is, our staff is asking us to, for consensus to move forward with the master plan. Do we have consensus in that? Yes, we do. I believe Mr. John Stone and Ms. Muckulak, Muckulak, excuse me, that should give you direction. Is there anything more that we need to discuss on this item now?
That's everything we need. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You want to thank Mr. John, thank you very much for joining us. Mr. Whitman, nice to have you with us today. So that will conclude item number one. We will go to item number two. And this is a discussion and ordinance update on short-term rentals. And Mr. John Stone, looks like you are still in the, still in the driver's seat on this one.
I, I am, and I'm going to lean on Scott Cutler, who's been adeptly managing the, this, this process for short-term rental ordinance regulations. So he's been shepherding this process and I'm gonna turn it over to him to give you an update.
Great, Mr. Cutler.
All right, thanks, Ken. Hello, everyone. I'm gonna, I have a couple of windows open, so I'm gonna go through my agenda for tonight. But really, just wanted to kind of remind everyone of where we were. Last, we had a study session back in April. Obviously, a lot has changed for our working environment since then, but we're still moving forward with the ordinance. Since April, we met, have had several meetings with stakeholders within the city, including admin services, police department, our city attorney, chief building officials, and then also potential third-party regulators for short-term rentals. So we've, we've had several meetings since April and have really come a long way. There was consensus in April to move forward with an ordinance, so I think we'll, we'll just keep continuing down that path. And so the memo that you had in your packet tonight really went over a much more specific framework for the ordinance. And actually, in some cases, actually outlined potential ordinance language. So at this point, we are pretty specific as far as the direction we've received. And I'm sure you'll have some questions about some stuff, but for the most part, we've stuck pretty closely to that framework that you saw on April sixth with some minor changes, and, and we can get into that if you have questions. But just to give a quick outline of the, the ordinance itself, and we've got two main sections. So the Chapter Eleven section, that's the licensing permitting and business regulations part of our city code. And then we also have proposed edits to Chapter Twenty-Six, which is the zoning and development portion of the code. So obviously, planning and zoning, which I'm in, would regulate Chapter Twenty-Six. And then Ally's department would be looking at regulating the Chapter Eleven sections, but they play well together. So you'll see in the ordinance, we have actually proposed Chapter Eleven section. And for the most part, that's pretty solid language for the ordinance in terms of what needs to constitute an application, what advertisements for short-term rentals need to look like, the age restriction, and just some other things. One thing that we did come to the conclusion about pretty specifically was that the city does need the right to be able to conduct, conduct inspections upon reasonable notice at any time to determine compliance with the ordinance. That wasn't something that was in the original framework, but something that our city attorney felt was important. And also leaving it up to staff with discretion to revoke the licenses such as fair to register or but basically it utilizes the existing business license framework that the city already has. That includes things like fines, fees, registration requirements and things like that. When something is unregulated like it is now, that makes it nearly impossible to actually revoke a license. So with an ordinance in place, that gives us a lot more tools within our existing frameworks to be able to revoke these licenses. Moving on to the Chapter Twenty-Six sections, we are proposing to define both the short-term rental and a short-term rental host and then make some changes to existing definitions such as hotel motel, rooming and boarding and bed and breakfast because those all do have different categories. And I can answer questions if you have anything specific in mind. And then we've got a big chapter in Twenty-Six, actually a new section within Twenty-Six that basically goes over the allowances. So where in the city are short-term rentals going to be permitted? There are some specifics that we talked about last time for multifamily developments because those are treated a little bit different in our zoning code for something like single family. And then again, some requirement sections, including, you know, not allowed in temporary structures, not allowed in affordable housing, and then the parking requirements. We do have a few more like proposals and considerations that we either didn't really discuss on April sixth or there wasn't strong consensus about. So one is the application fees. We are proposing to have an application fee that covers basically all of our expenses and includes the city's standard business license fee. And that, that amount, I said two hundred in the memo, but it really could be around that number, assumes a reliance on a third party for some aspects of our regulation. So, you know, a lot of these companies will provide administration services or enforcement activities that would otherwise normally be managed by the city. And that allows us to be flexible in terms of staff time in our end and having someone else actually manage a lot of the, the dirty work. The short-term rentals are subject to the city's lodger's tax, so I know there is a public comment about, you know, short-term rentals don't pay taxes, and that's currently true, but with the ordinance, they would actually be required to both pay a registration fee to the city and then also pay lodger's tax. So one thing I did want to touch on that we can get into, and this was on page four and five of the ordinance memo, was about an initial compliance deadline. So we had talked about this last time of having some sort of grace period to get everyone registered. But as we've talked more with Ally's team, we really feel that there needs to be some sort of RFP process for having these third-party vendors to be able to administer parts of the ordinance. So what we were proposing was potentially extending that initial compliance deadline by a couple of months to allow the city to pursue an RFP, which would basically give us time to select a vendor, implement the vendor, and then let people know that they need to get registered instead of going through an RFP process before an ordinance is actually in place. But that's kind of up to you to decide that path forward. And then one other thing that was touched on in public comment, but also in the memo was the cap. We, you know, there was consensus to explore a cap, but there wasn't really consensus on how that cap was going to be implemented. And my recommendation, based on more research and kind of looking into some more of these regulations, is that it might be better to wait on a cap until we can see the initial demand and understand the market saturation and the neighborhood saturation. But if we do want to go with a cap as part of the initial ordinance, would highly recommend going with a total number or a percentage of dwelling units as opposed to a radius system or a block-by-block system. One, it's more equitable, and two, it would just implement a waitlist where, you know, if you're unable to apply for any reason, you can then get on the waitlist and then one, once someone leaves, you can get back on. But it also is much, much easier to implement having a total number rather than a radius system. So with that, wanted to get your feedback tonight, but also just to update you on everything that we've done since then. Couple of the changes were made at the request of the city attorney and, and just talking with, you know, the police department and, and various teams. What's realistic is what's on here, but also this really, really closely mirrors what you saw on April sixth. So tonight, wanted to get your feedback and also wanted to start kind of finalizing the ordinance and potentially moving forward as soon as possible, if that's something that you're willing to have us do. We could actually have a planning commission as soon as early December, if that's something that you would want. I did actually want to address a couple of the public comments before we get into questions, if that's okay. So I know Mr. Whitaker called in and there were some questions about corporate-owned short-term rentals and, and the limit. So the limit, regardless of ownership, whether that's corporate or, you know, just a, a regular property owner, is one short-term rental, that's, you know, a whole home rental, which means that no one lives there, but you can rent it out. So there's no, you can't limit ownership based on if it's an LLC or a, a single person, but you can limit the number. So we're proposing to limit the number. Parking space requirements, and we do actually have a requirement that if there is some standard parking on site, that parking is provided. But I, there's really no way to enforce that a parking space is actually used, and that's the same for someone's single-family home. They can have a three-car garage and park all their cars on the street, and that's their prerogative. And then he also mentioned caps and density, no complaint process. We're kind of proposing to go through existing channels, but there are also some abilities of these third parties to provide additional outlets for taking complaints. So that's something that we would possibly get into in the RFP process. And then I did want to touch on the minimum night stays, so that was council consensus. It was fairly mixed, but we did not include that in the ordinance, and I can answer your questions as to why we did not do that. I, I believe the consensus was a minimum two-night stay. We're not proposing to have that in the ordinance primarily because of enforceability. It's nearly impossible to enforce and really not something that is included in a lot of ordinance. Some cities actually have maximum night stays, which isn't really common in, in the front range, but I, I haven't actually seen a minimum night stay anywhere else. So with that, happy to answer your questions, and then Ally can probably chime in on any more of the administration side of things in the RFP process. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say that this has been a very long process and what we're looking at is a long step from the bullet-pointed list that, that I brought to the very first session when I asked for it to be brought up to council. So I appreciate all of the work because every time it's like, okay, great, now changes add that, move this. I don't like the color painted. So, so I appreciate all of the hard work. Thank you for answering the question about the, about the LLC incorporations because I know that we did have consensus that we were okay with Denise and Joshua LLC owning one, but not Expedia.com or owning one. So I appreciate answering that and, and also answering the, the parking issue. The, um, the consensus to not allow single night stays, although it was a, a five to three, I feel pretty strongly about it and I realize that it's, it's not very enforceable. However, I feel like if it's in the ordinance and the neighbors complain that they, that there's a constant stream of traffic in and out of an STR that's next door to them, then that would give us an opportunity to enforce that, so it would be perhaps enforceable by complaint. Which then brings me to the complaint process. And I was just wondering if we need to do, so complaints, so reasons that, that it could be revoked would be things like, it's, it's, uh, you've done an inspection and it's, the property is not up to stuff. It doesn't have the fire extinguisher, it doesn't have the CO2s, you could pull it for that. Also complaints of the weeds are bad or they're not pulling the trash off, you know. So, but I know that those like code-type complaints go through the police department. So I'm just kind of wondering how is that process? I imagine it's a lot like with a business, if there's a complaint on a business, if that goes through the police department, how does that then get communicated into the department and staff that's managing? Who gets to keep their license? Who's, who's being a, a good STR neighbor owner and who's not? And then after you answer that question, I, I have a question about cap.
Ally, would you be able to answer how we kind of enforce on existing business licenses? Because I think that's probably the most similar process is if the police get a call about a business that's in violation of their business license, how we would enforce on that? Because I, I think the intent of this ordinance is to parallel our existing, how we handle business licenses versus someone's property like code enforcement complaints.
Yeah, and perhaps even thinking about, you know, the massage ordinance that we just, that you all recently passed, where the PD is part of the review process upon renewal of the license. And, and Scott and I were, were talking about this. There's a couple of different ways. I know Chief, the chief is also on the line. There's a couple of different ways that this could go in terms of handling complaints. And one is strictly through our, our police department, and the other is some of the vendors actually have a sort of a hotline where they record everything straight into the system. Whatever system we use, we'll want to make sure that we have access to record, you know, notes against each property directly into there as well. So I think that logistically, we'll work through a good communication strategy to make sure that each property where, where, you know, we're sort of tracking, you know, what the calls are about and whether coming in. And then with the annual renew, renewal, we'll know whether or not we need to then send that out to review for the police department based, based on any complaints.
And to add to what Ally just said, the, the code language as we've written it in the memo gives staff a decent amount of discretion to revoke licenses and also the right, our right to conduct inspections if there are issues. You know, if we get several complaints about abandoned vehicles, for example, this ordinance language allows us to actually send someone out there to verify. So it's not, you know, trespassing or anything else like that. And, and honestly, given the amount that we think that are out there, we will know about the ones that have the issues. And, you know, the, the people that are approving the ordinances will, or the, the licenses will be able to have that discretion.
And, and I would just echo that, you know, we, we've crafted the, the, the framework for the ordinance in, in a somewhat discretionary manner to, to say that, you know, the, the complaints could be related to the building code. They could be related to code enforcement. They could be related to criminal activity. They could be related to, you know, lack of, or failure to obtain a, or update a license. They could be related to failure to pace lodger's tax. or update a license. They could be related to failure to pay lodgers' tax. And so that, that was kind of a choice that we made to give a little bit of discretion to that, so that we could revoke a license under a variety of scenarios as we felt that was appropriate. And those license revocations would be appealable to the city treasurer. Is that correct, Ally?
Yeah, exactly. We use that same process that exists already.
Thank you. Do you, do you think that there is like a, is there a trigger amount if there's, you know, four complaints in one month on a single property? Do you think that that would kind of trigger a review, or is there, you know, have you thought about how that would, how that would work?
Not in terms of a specific number, but I think it, I mean, again, since there's the flexibility in the language to our discretion. I think it would also be based on the severity of the complaints. If we can tell that someone's calling in just because they don't like their neighbor versus something that's a serious safety issue, we would treat those differently.
Great, thanks. And then caps. So, you know, we did reach a consensus to implement caps after the initial registration, but, but our consensus was not clear on how to do that. And so I, I'm going to say this because oftentimes, as we are, you know, sitting in this meeting, we're we're representing kind of our city as a whole, but then there are times when we have to specifically represent our district. And I will tell you that District One, when you look at the map of how many STRs there are, the concentration of it is in my district. And it is, it's negatively affecting our community in District One. And I know that some of those, like by limiting to just the one, you know, the one non-owner occupied and then the one owner occupied, I know that that will bring down the number a little bit. But I think that we should consider caps that are, that are district-specific, because I know that there are districts that have very few, and it's not an impact on their district. And I think that we should consider it as a percentage of what single-family homes are in that district. So we also have a lot of multifamily homes in District One. And so I think when we're looking for a baseline number of homes and we're looking at a cap percentage, that it should, that we should not count the multifamily homes as ten homes. I think that, because we also are not allowing rental properties, like long-term renters, we're not allowing renters to be STR owners. So I, I think that those shouldn't be a part of that calculation. And, and I think it should be somewhere around like two and a half percent. It would be a two half, two and a half percent cap on the total amount of, of single-family homes in, in the district. And I'll let other people ask their questions, but by the end of the meeting, I'll be asking for a consensus on some sort of cap process.
Thanks, and I, I think that's good feedback. I know in the memo I wrote maybe a citywide cap based on the percentage of dwelling units, and I might have even thrown a number in there, maybe not in this one. But that actually is pretty close to the numbers that we were internally talking about, about two to three percent. And yeah, hadn't looked into it being by district. I know that occasionally, especially with the census, district boundaries change, so we would want to make sure that that, you know, a district boundary being changed due to the census wouldn't vastly increase or decrease the allowance. But other than that, thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hulteen, Mr. Stites, and Mr. Urban in that order. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a, just I guess a quick suggestion. In, in Chapter 11, Article 14, where they talk about posting the emergency con, contact information for the for the short-term rental, would it be possible to add the hotline or number for the complaint process there? I just know that a lot of times communication is hard, but making the information on the emergency contact and then what to do for a complaint, I think would be assurance to the neighbors. I know we've heard from some neighbors who have specific complaints about specific Airbnbs. I know there's a lot that are operating without complaints in our community. So a couple of things. First, I just want to remind myself and I think others that, you know, a lot of properties that are being operated as short-term rentals that are non-owner occupied, you know, if, if they're not able to continue doing that, then they oftentimes will convert to just a long-term rental, which is much less regulated than what we're talking about tonight. So I think in general, trying to strike that balance between allowing the short-term rentals to fill a need in our city for, for people to stay. We don't have great hotel options for people. And I know a lot of short-term rentals are allowing some of our residents to actually, you know, retain their homes here in the city. So it allows us to actually retain some strong households. I would be open to supporting a cap on the non-owner occupied short-term rentals. I think when we're looking at the type of regulations we're talking about, you know, when someone's renting out a room in their house, that's very different when they're doing short-term rental for an entire house that they're not actually overseeing its activities. I know we did have a consensus last time. I was one of the three who voted against having a minimum two-night stay. And there's a lot of reasons for that. You know, we are, we allow the current regulations around bed and breakfast, which are allowed in our residential zones. We don't restrict how long people can stay there. We have home occupancies with allowing up to one employee with customers and clients coming and going. And we don't restrict the number of people there. So the concern about like the impact on the neighborhood of people coming and going, whether it's a new person or it's the same person a couple nights, I think, you know, putting in a restriction, not allowing one night, to me is somewhat arbitrary for this, like this particular business use. And I know a lot of Airbnbs actually outsource their cleaning. So if they have one-night stays, there are a lot of times paying somebody in the community to come and clean that property. So we're also cutting down on our tax revenues. I would like us to consider moving forward without the one-night restriction for all of those reasons. And otherwise, I agree with Mr. Whitaker. I'd like to see a little bit more clarity. Sorry, I have notes on so many pages here. The, the terms of revocation, I think if they're just clearer for people, I think it helps. I mean, I realize some openness gives us flexibility on enforcement, but like clarity on at least if you hit here, you're going to get your license revoked, makes it a lot clearer for Airbnb owners to abide and not have that kind of be murky. So I'd like that to be clearer. And I also agree that complaint process should be pretty, like easy for people to figure out what it is and how to register their complaints. And then my last thing is on the initial 120 to 180-day initial compliance deadline. I appreciate the idea of getting the RFP out and getting a vendor online. But this is a real issue in our community that's playing out in real time, and I would like us to seriously consider working on that concurrently. I realize that it's probably a less-than-ideal process, but, I mean, if we're looking at not having licensed Airbnbs until mid-2021, when we've been working on this for two years, we have some, some frustrated neighbors and some frustrated Airbnb owners. And I do feel like, you know, if we can cut that back to 16 to 90 days, I think that would really make a difference. So I don't really have any questions. That's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stites and Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Ms. Hulteen and Ms. Hoppy got most of my stuff. I did have a question as far as we, we go with the revoking licenses and what is the penalty for somebody who maybe doesn't get their license or revokes their license or has their license revoked and then continues to have an Airbnb? What, what is the penalty for that?
We have someone willing to take that question.
All's on the line. You know, I mean, it's essentially running a business without a license, and it could be a citation to municipal court.
That's exactly right. You know, if, if like any other activity that requires city license, if you don't have that licensure, it hasn't been revoked and you continue to act, that's a citation in municipal court. So Mr. Hoppy's right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I would support making sure that we have a strong complaint process, whether that's in-house or external. I think making sure that that's clear and that the neighbors know who that they can, who they can speak to. And then a clear process for the owners of those Airbnbs to know how many strikes they get, what they get strikes for, all that stuff. I believe I will support the cap, one owner occupied and one non-owner occupied, because I do believe that somebody living there provides quite a bit more supervision than somebody not. I think those are all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the requirements are, I guess there's two different sections that mention short-term rentals are prohibited, deed-restricted, affordable housing, income-restricted housing, age-restricted housing, rents stabilized or rent-controlled housing. And I feel like that's a carryover from the city in County Denver, because to my knowledge, we don't have anything located within the city that carries those monikers or would have that restriction, and even if they did, they would have their own restrictions on that, and we wouldn't have any sort of purview on that. I'm not saying that we should allow short-term rentals in those categories. I just don't think we have anything in that category. Is that correct, or where did that come from?
That is mostly correct. So we do have a few age-restricted developments, but we don't have the traditional deed-restricted affordable housing or rent-stabilized housing, to my knowledge. I think that if that ever was something that was in the city, that we would want this language to basically prevent short-term rentals from happening in those locations. And this is not just something from City and County of Denver. This is, this language, I believe, is actually borrowed from the City of Los Angeles, but this line is basically in almost every short-term rental ordinance that I've seen, just to allow the city to prevent something from happening, even if it's not currently possible.
The, the one issue I didn't see in here was regarding notification of neighbors, either at application for licensure or upon receipt of license, and how do we notify the neighbors of the short-term rental?
That's something that's not currently included in the ordinance, and we weren't proposing to notify. Again, most cities don't notify neighbors. Some do. But I think we wanted to make it really clear that this was not an opportunity for public comment or potential, you know, revocation of licenses because their neighbor, they, they don't, they don't want their neighbor operating. I think having something like the signs being, the sign being posted on the property that says this is short-term rental and this is the emergency contact will do some of that. But I think that, one, that's a large administrative task, and two, it may open a can of worms in terms of people trying to prevent their neighbors from doing something that's within their rights. So it's, it's a tough balance, to be honest.
But again, I, I believe that City Council provided a consensus that that is something that we requested, and so this is another example of things that we requested, and I, I believe it received a more than a majority consensus to do that. How is the signage or the information posted on the property notifying them of the number to call? Is it like on a window sill, or how is that notifying the neighbors?
I don't have the exact language, and I do see that there was consensus about notice to neighbors. Frankly, we haven't gotten to the point where we know what that looks like, and typically that sort of thing, just like some of the other things we've talked about tonight, in terms of the complaint process are not necessarily codified. Those are policies. So a complaint hotline and procedure for reporting someone would never be in the code. It would be something that's a city policy. And I think notice to neighbors could also be in there. But we haven't explored exactly what that looks like.
I think that if we have a, a application process, the process is defined as to how you receive a license. The, there is nothing in the license process that indicates that neighbors can object. There is no letter of protest. There's no ability for someone to object. So notifying a neighboring property owner upon receipt of the license, I think is a neighborly thing to do, and providing that in a written form should be covered in the cost of the application and and wouldn't be disruptive or infringing on someone's rights. So I would like us to continue to move forward with that. And then the, there was something else here. As far as the revocation of licensing, when we talk about the staff having significant leeway or discretion, in my mind, that means that we'll never revoke a license, because we don't have any sort of leg to stand on when we, when we devise exacting language regarding the revocation of a license, that gives the staff a leg to stand on or backstop to stand up against, so that if someone comes in and does something that we don't like, and it goes against X, Y, and Z regulations, we have to revoke the license. We don't have a choice. So I, I think that it's nice to have that discretion, but it could also backfire for us. So I'd like us to have some specific language in there that talks about these are the ways in which a license will be revoked, so that the staff doesn't have a situation where we're hoping that they'll revoke it, but there isn't any real backstop for that. So let's see. And then as far as having corporations overseeing or, or owning a, a short-term rental, if I have 4740 Reed Street LLC, and then I have 4745 Reed Street LLC, and they're all owned to my name, does that get me around this one-owner cap, or how does that work if I have multiple LLCs that I'm a partner in, but I'm a minority partner in them?
So the Secretary of State has a database on what, you know, who owns an LLC. And we would actually be looking at who the actual property owner is in making that determination. So the intent is to not have someone that has 20 LLCs, but they're all registered but under the same name to have 20 different properties.
Well, if the property is owned by an LLC.
LLCs are ultimately under someone's name. I mean, you know, an actual human person has to have an LLC. So one person couldn't, wouldn't be able to create 20 LLCs and own 20 different properties to operate short-term rentals. Same with, same with Expedia. They wouldn't be able to have Expedia one LLC and have 20 different Expedia-owned properties. Anyone else on our call want to?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. It's, it's a tricky question and, and one that we've tried to navigate, Mr. Urban, with our definition of a short-term rental host. And, and trying to use that in a fairly artful way to be able to, to work around that. We worked with Mr. Dahl's office to some extent on that. It's, it's tricky, we'll acknowledge, but I don't know, Jerry, if you have other comments?
You know, the Secretary of State's website is reasonably searchable. And so I, I understand the fact pattern. If I create 20 different LLCs and different names, but I'm the guy for each of those. And I acquired, tried to acquire, and I can, it's legal, acquire 20 different properties. Question then becomes, can I, you know, with different named LLCs, can I get a 20 different short-term rental licenses? But nevertheless, my name is still on the LLCs in one place or another as the registered agent, as the president, as the managing director, as the manager of the LLC. And it would seem to me that, that this is a twofold approach. We define host as narrowly as we can in the way that Mr. Johnson, Mr. Culler, as mentioned. And then honestly, from just an enforcement standpoint, if there's any kind of indication that looks like there might be multiplicity going on, you can dive a little deeper into the Secretary of State's corporate records for those LLCs. I often have a paralegal at my office. And I'll say, here's an LLC. Tell me all the people that are connected with it. And she can very easily give me the list of names. And so that's not a bad way to deal with it. My suggestion would be that we write the host language as well as we can, as has been described. And that this is more of an enforcement and a detective effort. It is not hard to do if, if It is not hard to do if, if, uh, you, you get a sense that this one person might be in several places. Uh, you can start searching really pretty easily for that name. I'm, I'm not certain that we, I don't think that we should be doing it for every application when they come in. But as we see that there may be the potential for someone abusing, that's pretty easy to, to track those names.
Okay. And then, uh, the last question that goes, that was sort of mentioned as far as the business process, the business license process, but so if someone doesn't get licensing uh, from day one and/or is denied a license from day one and continues to operate, um, their punishment is that they can't receive a license or, uh, if, can we put a sort of a ban on a particular property from receiving a license based on that, uh, violation or I just want to make sure we get it in a situation where we're actually able to punish someone who doesn't have a license but should have a license.
Certainly, uh, we might consider, as you often do for liquor licensing, kind of the compliance history of the applicant uh, in the past with respect to going forward application. The analogy is the good moral character of the applicant. In the liquor licensing context, you're allowed to determine whether to issue a liquor license based upon pardon me, good moral character, which in turn can be what kind of violations of various administrative and other laws are on this person's record. So if one of those violations is that they've been taken in a municipal court for conducting a short-term rental without a license, that's relevant to their ability to hold the license going forward, if you say it is in the, in the eligibility criteria in the, to be created ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have, um, Ms. Hoppy, Ms. Hutchinson and Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I believe in, in one of the past study sessions, I don't think it was the one in April, the one before, we had a consensus to, um, not allow them to, um, apply for a license for a year if they didn't get their, if they didn't get their, if they were caught operating without a license, then they were, would be fined and then not allowed to operate for a year. So, um, at, at some point that shook through the strainer somewhere. But, um, my question is, can we so Mr. Doll basically said, we, we can add that on, onto their saying, you know, you have to, to be, to have a license, you have to had to be compliant. And if you're operating without a license, then we can say you can't do that for a year. But my question is, what I haven't seen is fines, because I know that we had agreed that the fines should be significant. And, um, what I'm hearing is that the, the complaint process will, it'll go through municipal court. Is there, is there something where we, where we can determine the fine? Or is that something that will be determined, um, by the judge when it goes in front of the court?
Uh, the, the city council has rarely in the past, but they have put together uh, some minimum fine, uh, levels. Trying to recall what it was, it was ten or at least, might have been at least fifteen years ago. But there was a first, second and third violation fine. It was, I think, in the nuisance arena somewhere. Don't hold me to, to that, but, but I do remember that that kind of structure was proposed and actually even adopted. Uh, the judge isn't a particular fan of those kinds of things, but council will appreciate that that I appreciate that the council has a different job than the judge and a different, and different set of needs. Uh, so you have that option available to you. You could, you could structure that. Whether it be an administrative fine, through the administrative enforcement process, which might be another way of enforcing this whole system. Uh, rather than taking municipal court. Uh, or whether it be minimum fines limits that are laid on the judge if there's a conviction, you have the power to do that.
And with the business license as it stands today, um, because this is going to be a business license, there are existing um, fines that are associated with failure to register for a business license. Um, I don't know those numbers, but um, it's actually already in our code. Um, so any sort of additional fines would have to be part of this ordinance if, if we weren't wanting to go with just what already exists.
I'll, I'll also just add, if I may, that, um, I was, I've been talking to, to, to vendors just to understand who's out there and so one of them recently suggested that actually a way to gain compliance is, um, to agree that we won't seek back lodgers' taxes. Um, for those that, that do apply and go through the licensing process. So, um, certainly Mr. Doll and I have not talked about that, but it was just sort of something that seems to be out there and, and is somewhat common that we could certainly investigate a little more as an option for that punishment.
Uh, thank, thank you for that. And then I just wanted to make a note on the, the noti- notifying the neighbors. Yeah, we did have consensus on notifying the neighbors within a hundred feet and part of that notification required them. So the STR, what we had agreed upon was that the STR had to notify the neighbors within a hundred feet and that the um, emergency contacts phone number had to be on, in that notification. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure how we want to handle that process. If we want to have it, that it comes through our, our licensing department, which is not a very big department. Um, or if we want to put that on to the STR that they have to notify the neighbors and it has to have the emergency contact in that notification, um, and I, I guess we just need to decide how do they prove to us that they did that mailing?
Okay, thank you. I have, uh, Ms. Hutchinson, Ms. Weaver and Ms. Hulteen.
Sorry, um, I'm looking at the application process and, um, it says certification for, um, smoke detectors. Certification that it's not deed restricted, certification that it meets parking requirements. Anybody can put down that they're, yeah, it's certified or whatever. There is nothing on here that they are providing, that they have insurance and liability, um, on the property. I would think that that would be important. Um, you know, if there's any accidents or who knows what's could happen. Um, also, I, I think on the application, it would be important to have reasons for revoking a license, have it printed out there. Um, you know, not the total complete thing ever, because always things come up that you never thought would come up. But just to give a, um, the host an idea or the owner exactly, these are things that, you know, this is a way that you can lose your license type of a thing like that. Yeah, and also I'm thinking that, um, a cap on the short-term rentals, I'm looking for a cap in the neighborhoods. So, once people get licensed and things like that, there are people who actually live in an upstairs and also rent part of that upstairs and do a short-term rental, maybe in the basement or vice versa. Then they might have an, another house or somebody else has a short-term rental on the same block. And, um, that's kind of a lot in a neighborhood in one area. So looking at that, a cap on the number of those short-term rentals are a huge business. It's a bigger business than a long-term rental. They make beaucoup bucks. So it's like part of revoking a license is, is also what if they don't pay their tax? The lodging tax, you know, I mean, and, and that shouldn't go for very long, just a short time. You know, so I think, I don't see in that we have city staff that's going to be able to handle all of this. I think that we would need a third-person vendor or whatever that does this kind of work. Um, just to kind of stay on top of it, because it seems like, um, even with the certifications on the application, you're just taking their word. There's no inspection being done at the very point of when, um, a license is, you know, being asked for. So you're just taking the person's word and it's kind of, you know, I think that's kind of out there and, but then the city can go in at any time to inspect when they want, but that's being reactive, that's not being proactive. So I think also at the very beginning with the licensing, um, program here, um, I, I wouldn't believe everything that everybody's saying when they're filling out the application. I think there needs to be some follow-up. And, um, you know, definitely they need to have liability insurance and they've got to also protect the neighbors that are around them also. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I, just as a business owner, I, I want to clarify that we're, we're talking about a business licensure and we were just already very good at having those applications and yes, we do self-report our taxes, um, for what I sell at the, at the farm and no one comes and checks. Uh, because I'm honest about that and I know that my business license would be taken away if I wasn't paying the taxes on those things. So I think that some of these issues, um, are already being dealt with with this business license process that we're presenting. Um, I did have some questions, uh, and some concerns. First of all, um, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Hulteen. I, I don't, I don't really see a reason for a minimum night stay. Um, I, I don't, I don't really feel like one or two or three nights makes a difference in, in all of this. So I just, I wanted to comment that, um, I don't think that's really necessary. Um, coming back to the business license, if, if, and this is a question maybe for Scott or, or, or maybe for Ken. If, if someone wants to find out if I have a business license on my business, can they call the city and ask about my, my address? And can you reference it by address?
We can, yes.
And, and would you tell them that, yes, that's a, that's a farm, that kind of, I mean, could, would you be able to tell them what my business was? The name of my business?
Yes, so we, we have, um, generally pretty basic information, but we'll be able to know if it's a short-term rental or a farm or an office or
Okay, but, but, but my, my information is listed and, and you can give that out right now. Is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, so I, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say the general, we can't, we can't give out any confidential information. Um, but yeah, the general information we
But the general information.
General information, yeah.
And so I, I also am a little bit concerned about the notification process and I'll just share with you my experience um, with, with notifying a- as a farmer, um, when I first started, uh, doing what I was doing, doing what I do at Five Fridges, you know, I, I notified all of my neighbors around the property. Um, and since then, um, for, I, I, I know it's meant in, in very nice ways, but people have come back and told me what they think I should be doing um, in regards to my, my farming business. And, and I, while that's very kind of them, it's really not their business. It's my business, um, to, to do the farming. And I, I, so I am, I am very hesitant about, while I think it's a courtesy to notify the neighbors, I also think that with the licensing process, um, those neighbors can also call and ask the city um, about that information. And, and it is a courtesy to give emergency contact information. But that is something that we are asking additionally with this license application. So that I'm assuming that if I had a problem with my neighbor who I found out was running an Airbnb, I could call the city and get that emergency contact information, could I not? In this process?
It would be located on the application. So yes, they could.
But I could as a neighbor then call you and say, hey, is this a short-term rental running, you know, at this address? Could you say, yes, it is, and their emergency contact is? If I requested it?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's, that wouldn't be considered confidential because it's a requirement that there is an emergency contact.
Okay. So I guess, I guess because of that, I am very hesitant either to, uh, put signage on the property. Um, again, I, I find that very invasive, um, because again, we are already licensing people and you have all of this information. And people can call the city and they can ask and they can ask what that emergency contact is. Um, so I'm, I'm very hesitant about sort of re, again, if, if the, if the, the short-term rental owner wants to do that as a courtesy, I agree that that's a polite thing and it's probably the right thing to do. Um, I'm concerned about the, the neighbors acting out in a way that then prevents that person from being able to have their business run as a legal business when they have done all of the correct things. Thanks. Oh, sorry, I had one last thing. Um, the lodging taxes, uh, as with a business license, what are the lodging taxes in Wheat Ridge?
Ten, ten percent.
Okay, so, so basically that person also self-reports all of that, as all of us do with our business licenses. And that's ten percent of all of that beaucoup money that's being made coming back to the city with that license. Thanks.
Thank you. Our, uh, we have then the Ms. Hulteen. And, uh, Ms. Hulteen, and then I'm gonna ask a couple of questions and then we'll take your hands again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Uh, my first question this round is for Ally. I'm curious if you've heard anything from these, uh, vendors or the third parties about what it's like to be working with, um, the actual like Airbnb and VRBOs, like are they are they partners in communicating with their clients or is there kind of a firewall? Um, because I, I know historically they've been kind of protective of their, the people they represent. Do you have any information from the vendors on, like, you know, can we work with Airbnb to locate people who are listing within Wheat Ridge to notify them of any changes that we have in regulations?
Honestly, that's one of the number one reasons to, to work with a, a partner, because they, um, and again, we'll, we'll do this in the RFP process. Um, Scott and I were just recently on a call with one that's one of the bigger in this country. That's what they do. Um, and their number one module, that, you know, they sort of like any software, they build out modules is listing management and listing identification. And so these vendors, when you talk to them, they right out of the gate give you, here's all your listings. So they have proprietary software that they've built that combs every single uh, or, and more and more as they get added, sort of sites on the internet, pull, pull the data, pull the pictures. They know exactly where they are. And so what, the, the process is that they will reach out proactively. So when the, the ordinance is passed and we're ready to go, they will proactively reach out to every single property. And they'll, frankly, some of them will send them a screenshot of their listing that, you know, we, here's your bedroom, here's your, or here's your front door, right? Um, and here's the, here are the steps. And one of the things that we'll be looking for in the RFP, and that, and that's one of the reasons, again, to outsource. We don't have the, the manpower, the woman power, um, to do that here at the city. Um, and they're, they're built to do this. And then they'll manage the communication. It'll be on our letterhead. It'll be all of the city's branding, um, and it'll be specific to our ordinance. And then, so they'll, they'll work with them, they'll send them reminders. Um, they'll start nice, they'll work from carrot to stick. And they'll, and they also, back to, um, a, a question, I think, um, Ms. Weaver has, they, they can also, there's also an audit capacity there as well. So we'll get sort of real time, we'll have, we'll, we'll be able to log into these various dashboards, depending on who we go with and be able to see how that communication is going. Um, so we'll know exactly who they're in touch with. And then both the community development department and the finance division will have, um, referral, um, a referral window where they, and, and the police department, um, where they can sort of look at each application and make sure it aligns with the code. Did I, I'm not sure if I answered your question.
No, that was, that was great. Thank you. That was, you answered more than my question. Um, so I, I have, I just want to comment on the notifications since that conversation's kind of evolved a little bit. I really appreciate Councilmember Weaver's comments on that. And, um, I guess where, where I, I guess where I stand after she shared her perspective is I do think it's good practice to reach out to your neighbors. Um, I think it's neighborly and, um, I would support asking, asking the host to notify their neighbors in part because that creates a face-to-face relationship with the neighbor. And I think a lot of problems are actually And I think a lot of problems are actually resolved when people actually know each other and they know the person. Um, if all of this is handled through the city or a third party, then, you know, things can escalate which could actually. May otherwise be handled by somebody just picking up the phone and calling them and saying, hey, this is a problem. So, um, I would support notification in which we ask the host to notify their neighbors, um, with the hopes that they would develop relationships through that. And I guess my, my last comment tonight is, you know, I, I think one thing we're not talking about is just the potential for Airbnb's to be something that we take a lot of pride in. In our city, we have some really unique properties and people could be really coming to Wheat Ridge because we're the destination, not because. They're passing through on the way to the mountains or they can't afford to be in Denver. Um, we're a really amazing city. I recently stayed in a small town in Utah. And, you know, teeny tiny town and I was stayed in an Airbnb which was somebody's, you know, guest house in the back of their house. And like this teeny town had like a beautiful little guide to the town that they'd given to the Airbnb hosts. So that when I stayed there, I knew where to go get food and where the jewelers were and when the farmer's market was. And so I think, you know, we're really having the regulatory aspect of this and I think it's important. But I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that, that this is a really oper- great opportunity for us to showcase what makes us a great city. And to attract people to what makes Wheat Ridge quirky, you know, I seventy and Kipling is not our quirky, it's not where we're charming. So I'm really excited that we're moving forward with this and I hope we can strike a balance of a regulatory environment that gives neighbors confidence. And, you know, enough enforcement that they feel like they've got something that they can take action on if the specific Airbnb in their neighborhood's a problem. But overall, and as a city, I would like us to have more opportunities to welcome people into our community so that they can see what makes this a great place. So I'm excited to see this moving forward and I appreciate the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions also, uh, in the, um, in, in one section we have, um. Where owners of apartment buildings may operate for, uh, for their units as, uh, short-term rentals. So if I had a, had a four or five or a six-unit, uh, apartment building that I could have four of them as rentals, is that? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that seems a little extreme to me because then you could have, uh, you know. In District One, I know there are a number of smaller apartment-type complexes and that would, that would tend to, uh, if we don't show us some sort of a. Of a geographical, uh, density, that, that could be a problem for me. And then, uh, I had a, uh. What, uh, the, um. The third-party vendor, um, how does, how will the, how will the economics of this deal work?
Great question, Mayor. Happy to take that one, Scott. Is that okay with you? And, yeah, so I, I believe that our, our goal here is to make sure that the, 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 the licensing. Um, that, that, that anything we, that we spend as a city is covered, right, is covered. This is revenue neutral or, or I should say expense neutral to us. Um, and so we've, you know, just wanting to make sure that we're sort of on the right track here, gotten some ballpark estimates of what it would cost. Um, and again, we'll do a competitive RFP. That's really important piece of what we do. Um, so. Usually these, these vendors charge by module. I, I mentioned that there's a number of modules. So for example, one, one vendor offers the listing management, the licensing, audit. Um, and the, the sort of complaint hotline, right? So depending on where we go. Um, but I can tell you that the number that Scott has in his memo proposed at about a two hundred dollar. A license fee per year. That is, um, based on feedback. So first of all, that will cover. Um, our estimates that should cover the cost, that alone should cover the cost of us paying for a vendor. Even if we go with the full suite, that's our goal here. Um, and also we learned that licensing is typically. Um, two to three times the average nightly rate. So that seems to be an industry standard. So we charge two to, two to three times the average nightly rate. The average nightly rate in Wheat Ridge right now is about a hundred dollars. So our goal would be to cover that and then get law, and then get lodgers tax on top. I'm sorry, Mayor, I can't hear you.
A hundred dollars per unit, I'm sorry.
Yes, so yes, the average nightly rate in, in that from what some of these vendors have pulled for us and some preliminary, preliminary searching. Shows that the average nightly rate in Wheat Ridge is about a hundred dollars. So in theory, we should be between two and hundred and three hundred dollars for. Um, a license per year.
Thank you. Um, I have Miss Hoppy and then Miss Hutchinson.
Um, I was going to try to move through a few consensuses from some of the discussion we've already had.
I tell you what, before you do, before you do that, Miss Hutchinson had her hand up. Could we take her, uh, her comment or question first, Miss Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I really just wanna know simply what is the process for, um, if neighbors have a complaint? Exactly what is it that they would do?
Well, I think it, it depends on what the complaint is, uh, Mitch Hutchinson's, if, you know, if it's a, it's a criminal issue, they would call the police department. And, or if it's. But there, there's, there, there'll be different, um, I think types of complaints. If it's a code enforcement issue that the house just isn't be kept up. There's, there's weeds, that would be a code enforcement issue. If there's, um, you know. In, in noise, if there's loud noise, that would be, and most of it's gonna go to the police department. Uh, but if we use the third vendor to help us with the complaint process, uh, that might be the, the first call. That then, um, the third vendor calls the host right away and says, your, your, um, tenants or your. Your customers are being loud, we're getting complaints from the neighborhood, you need to call them and tell them to quiet down. Um, so it depends on how far we go with, with using the third-party vendor for the complaint process. Otherwise, it's, it's, um, police department.
Okay, because like, I know sometimes there can be, um, people who just show up. That aren't part of those, um, renters that were supposed to be there and, you know, there's like a lot of people. So that would be a police issue then, eh?
Well, that's, there's nothing illegal, um, about somebody showing up at somebody's house, um, if there, if there's.
Well, they're not like quiet.
No, if there's illegal activity going on or a nuisance issue, yes, um, they, they would call. The emergency hotline number, um, again, depending on exactly how we set that up, if that, that's gonna be the police department or if it's gonna go through the third-party vendor. We need to work through that still.
Okay, thank you.
To add to your question real quick, um, I, the last paragraph actually of our memo on page five, um, talked about developing a host guidebook. Um, so we do wanna have a user-friendly, um, especially for the host that are applying what, what is expected of the host. Because when someone looks at a ordinance, doesn't always make sense. We want something that has really clear guidelines for the hosts. Um, available on our website and also provided or emailed to any host that has a successful license application. And I think that website or, um, guidebook could also be used by, um, a neighbor that, you know. What do you do when there's a noise issue, you call this number, something like that. Um, because that way, you know, different departments aren't getting the incorrect calls and it's, it's going to the right spot.
Thank you for your forbearance. Please, uh, see if you can get a consensus.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But before I start working down the list of consensuses that I have, I just want. Everybody to know that I looked on the city website and operating without a valid business license is subject to daily fines of up to one thousand dollars per day. As set forth in section one through five and one through six, the City Code of Laws. So, um, I consider that pretty significant, um, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, um. That that is already in our, on our book. Um, so I'm gonna start with, um, a softball. Um, I would like to ask for consensus to add, um, cer- uh. It's certificate of insurance to be required to apply for a license to prove that the property is insured.
Let's do one, two, three, four, five. Looks like we have consensus there.
Another softball. I'm gonna add, uh, I'm gonna ask for a consensus that, um, we do not pursue.
Hate to interrupt, but when you say certificate of insurance, is there a number that we're, that we're targeting or is it just that the, what kind of insurance?
The property has general property insurance. You have to have property insurance for your mortgage anyway. So I think just that your property is insured is what we're looking for.
Or liability, probably liability though, right? You're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
If, if somebody.
First, I would think.
We'll research a few other ordinances and see what other cities are doing on that to bring back certain coverages.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask for consensus that we will not pursue back lodgers taxes of those who come. Um, into compliance and get their license as an STR.
And you're talking about af- after initial implementation of the ordinance?
Yes.
Or somebody in the future, let's say it's five years down the road, they, we find somebody that doesn't have a license. Is that same thing?
I, I think same thing because at that point they're gonna have the fines up, up to a thousand dollars a day plus they, plus they will have other. I'm getting ready to ask about adding that they can't apply for a license for a year. So I think they'll have other consequences. And so, um, having to do the research for, for the back piece, I don't, I think we just say no back lodgers taxes.
If they come non-compliant.
Yes. Um, and then I'd like to ask for a consent, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question, uh, just thinking about that a little bit more. I'm concerned that that might create an incentive for people to not get licensed. Um, because then maybe they try and see how long they get away with it and then, uh, when they get caught, then they don't have to pay their back taxes. So I don't know, I'm, I'm asking that as an open-ended question, I guess, if that's something that people have experienced with or not.
For Stites and Miss Weaver.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say I agree with Miss Holte on that. I, I think that, uh, moving. We should forgive the back taxes up to a certain point, up to maybe six months or so from now, but after that, you should have, you should have known better, I think. Um, uh, you know, if it's four or five years from now, then they should have been paying those taxes up to that point, so. Um, I wouldn't support that now.
In the current, the current process, I mean, if we're, if we're keeping this fairly similar to a business license. You know, we don't, we don't have those types of, of restrictions in the code and it's up to the city treasurer to negotiate, um, those different things.
Just to back up what Mr. Stites and, and Miss Holte said, uh. My experience with Grand County was that they sent out their letters and then you had by a certain date to comply. Or after that date, you would be considered for back taxes. So it was an incentive to get it done by the first of the year or I can't remember what it was.
Was that an initial implementation?
Yeah, that was the initial implementation. They, they went through a process just as, as Ally described. And, um, they sent out letters and then they sent out secondary letters and basically, you know, because it takes a, a bit to sort of get your ducks in a row. And, um, so I think it was like a six-month period and there were things that you had to get done. But there was a drop-dead date of after this date, you will owe us back taxes. And it was interesting. They do send out a report of, and here are all the days that you, you rented last year. So we know exactly how much money you made. It was, it was very fascinating. So, so that, that information is available and, and does create. Positive pressure for people to get the licenses.
All right, so I, I'd like to change then to consensus and see if we can find consensus to no back lodgers tax. Um, or back lodgers tax will be forgiven, um. As long as you come into compliance within, um, six months of, um, the implementation of the, of the licensing ordinance. That sound like good direction?
Show of hands. We have consensus on that?
I'd like to ask for a consensus to add to, um, to the process that if they are, um, non-compliant. That they can't apply for a license for one year.
Or we have consensus on that?
I'd like to ask for a consensus that the short-term.
Yeah, can we get more clarification on what non-compliant is? Yeah.
So after the, after the initial, we'll say six months after the ord- ordinance goes into, into effect, um. Or after the, sorry, what the hundred and. The hundred and eighty-day initial compliance deadline, if they are caught operating a business without a license. Then not only do they have the. After. Not only do they have the fine, and then if it's after six months, then they have to pay their back taxes, but then also they won't be allowed to apply. They won't be allowed to apply for a license for a year.
Thanks.
Um, okay, and then I'd like to ask for consensus that the short-term rental, um, host, uh, owner. Um, is responsible to notify the neighbors within one hundred feet of who the emergency contact is. And that the staff will give them the, um, the addresses if they, if they need that. Um, and I think this is important for things such as property damage, fire, that kinda stuff, so, um. That's why I'm asking for consensus on that.
Do you have a question on that, Ms. Urban?
How is that different from the previous consensus that we've already made, uh, in the regard of notifying neighbors?
I think before we were asking the staff to do it. I know I'm asking for the short-term rental property owner to do it.
I was gonna agree with that. It was, originally it was a little bit less specific, but it was more on staff and now it's more on the host.
I have a quick question about that.
Weaver, you have a question on that and then it looks like Miss Dozeman has one.
Um, what if the, is there some system? Where if the neighbors are consistently calling on things that are not happening. But creating. A situation that they are not able to continue running this business with their license. In other words, what if they're harassed by their neighbors? For running it at all?
You know, I think, I think we, we try to work through that, Miss Weaver, at the city and, I mean, we, 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 we have cases where we're dealing with that now. Um, I had a phone call I just sent to the chief yesterday from a, from, from a resident who, who complains about their neighbor all the time. And, and we, we don't, we found that there's, that the complaints aren't legitimate. So, um, you know, we kinda weed through those as they come.
Okay.
Um, you know, if, if there's a bunch of, uh, non-legitimate claims, we're not gonna take their license away.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I had a comment from Miss Dozeman and then Mr. Urban.
Yes, thank you. So I was just gonna ask for clarification whether this would be compulsory and would there be some sort of punishment? If they don't notify their neighbors, I, I, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around enforcement if it's, if we're putting it on the onus of the, of the. Short-term renter, owner.
I think that we would ask them to self-certify if, if they have completed it. Um, and then you'll know that they didn't complete it if you get complaints on a, a property and they're like, and we don't know who to call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, I think the premise behind notifying neighbors is, uh. There's a distinction here between other home occupations and other uses of residential properties where in. Uh, in some cases you have a short-term renter coming in at one o'clock in the morning and very rarely would you have someone coming to a home occupation. Location for a real estate agent that has their home office at their, their house at one o'clock in the morning. Uh, very rarely do you have a client spending the night in your property, uh, and in, any other home occupation. So that's the distinction here with regard to short terminals and the need to notify the neighbors is those one o'clock in the morning situations where. Uh, they need to know who to call immediately, not, uh, having to call the city and then reach the, our emergency line, then find out who the. Uh, appropriate contact person is, that they should be able to have that number on speed dial and, and know what's going on in their neighborhood. If someone's pulling into someone's driveway at one o'clock in the morning and we're not gonna pretend like we don't have nosy neighbors, you know, around here that. We'll, you know, we'll, we'll notice that and call the police and, uh, that we just wanna try to eliminate the amount of. Uh, frustration that could go on without that communication. And I think, uh, enforcing that on the front end is a good first step to being good neighbors and making sure that they have that contact.
Ms. Hoppy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask for um consensus that we ask staff to concurrently work on the ordinance and the RFP process.
Currents. Looks like we have consensus there.
I'd like to ask for consensus. Um, so what we're asking, what we've already um put in here is that they have a posting inside the property. Um, I'm not asking for anything external of the property. I'm asking for the posting that's inside the property to add the language of um but the phone number of where or how you can complain about the property that's inside the property. That would be for the people that are renting the property. So I'd like to ask for consensus for that.
Can you, Ms. Hoppy, can you clarify that?
It's it's basically from you, Ms. Hulte, when you said, the first thing you said is that maybe one of the ways we could um help when we're talking about how do we get the complaints in the complaint process? You said add language of where to complain. And so um I think that there that there was a misunderstanding that we were asking people to post on the external of the property signs, this is a short term rental, but it's actually the way it's written is that it's internal to the property. So I'm just asking that we add, that we ask them to add to their posting requirement that they already have in here. That they add the language of um where to complain.
So for a tenant, so?
Yes, it's internal to the property.
To complain about the units? Um, needs a new, it needs an iron or?
I mean, just what the complaint process is. I mean, that's that's what we were asking, like, people were asking, well, how do, how will people know where to complain? And so?
The customer to the Airbnb complaining on who?
Yep. On the Airbnb, I suppose.
Not sure if I'm following.
Yeah, I think I would just echo Patrick's question. I mean, what would be the nature of the complaint? Would it be lack of a fire extinguisher or?
Uh, egress is blocked or um, you know, the the, you know, the the um
Building code issues.
Like there's, yeah, or there's uh chemicals on the on the property that are unsafe or things like that. Great, uh, Ms. Hulte?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify. I was thinking that was an uh external, like an outside notice. Um, and I do know Airbnb and other typical short term rentals usually have pretty exhaustive information that's exchanged between the owner and the renter. But I agree, um, you know, once you get there, if there's any confusion, it'd be nice if they knew where to call and not bother their neighbors who we're hearing from tonight don't want to be bothered with that. So thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, so I I guess I was kind of under the impression that the complaint process was going to be um neighbors of the STR potentially complaining, not necessarily tenants. Um, and and the renters that are gonna be using Airbnb, so um. But I mean, it it's kind of just like if you were to be staying at a hotel and they have like a, you know, some sort of directory or, you know, if you if you have complaints or if you do this or or need that, you can call this number. So like I kind of just see it along those lines. Uh, but again, it's just one of those little points that I don't know how we would be enforcing it unless we're doing robust inspections and and I mean, yeah, they can self-certify. Um, just with like the noticing of neighbors, but I I just the more that we get into the weeds of this and and have to be putting in enforcements that I quite honestly don't know that we are capable of handling, um, you know, that's I I'm I'm worried about that.
Mike's?
Mr. Doll's got his finger up too, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, Mr. Doll first then. Sorry, Ms. Weaver. I sorry to, sorry to butt in. I I've done these ordinances and other jurisdictions that I represent. And I will say that one of the things that is of great use is uh notice to the tenants of the short term rental where they can complain and how they can go about doing that. Uh, and that's not only for their benefit, but very much for the benefit of the jurisdiction. Because you'd much rather have those tenants being calling the manager. It's identified at a phone number that can get there within forty five minutes or some number that's that's uh really important, rather than calling the city to say there's these things that are that are going wrong. And it really something that that I have found that the uh the tenants have really uh demanded to have and deserve to have and it diverts complaints from within the building uh much more efficiently to to have that. The the owners never object, because that's just part and parcel of it, as has been mentioned before, the information that they're giving to their guests anyhow. And they wanna hear, they wanna hear the complaint from the guest so they can address it. They don't wanna hear that complaint redirected through the city uh for obvious reasons. So frankly, it's good for everyone. It's a good system. I recognize that's very different and a separate issue from notice to neighbors of the existence of an STR and what you do about it. And that's likely the subject of a separate discussion.
So if I, if I could.
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Thank you, um, Mayor. So would this this complaint be going to the to the emergency contact?
From your emergency contact?
Yes.
The the manager emergency contact, it's just information that's posted inside. If you have any issues about your use of this property or or additions on the property that are concerned to you, please call the following name at the following number. We're happy to help you. And frankly, you wanna have that, that really diverts problems that get resolved. And no one ever, the neighbors don't end up having to deal with it either just the city.
So to clarify, um, that's already in the ordinance is it's required that uh um, the license contains the emergency contact number for the tenant to call that number. I think what uh Counselor Hoppy was trying to add maybe was also providing uh ways for them to complain to the city, or I'm a little bit confused. I just wanna make sure I'm getting this down correctly.
I, well, I didn't realize it was already in there, but I wanted to make sure that there, if there were things on the property that were unsafe, that there was a a place for them to know where to complain about that. And so if that's already on the license, then this can, or if that already has to be there, then we can move on to a a different topic.
So right now, it's the um emergency contact information is provided on the license that is required to be posted. If that's sufficient, then, okay.
I saw your handle a bit ago, and I don't know whether you had gotten that chance. We went to Mr. Doll in lieu of you.
Nope, I I was just, I'm not understanding.
Okay.
Now it's clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Hoppy, you may continue.
Okay, this is the last one I have. I saved the biggest for the end. I would like to ask for consensus for a two percent cap of non-owner occupied units per district calculated by the number of single family homes in the district.
Two percent, let me repeat it so I understand. Two percent cap per district based on the number of single family dwellings in that district?
Of, but these are of non-owner occupied license holders. So so what doesn't um add into the cap are um owner occupied. I'm I'm here and my my guest is here. That's not, that license isn't added into the cap. But the cap is for whole unit licenses.
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Okay, so before we go to consensus, can we take a few questions? We'll start with Mr. and then go to Ms. Weaver.
Do we have a working definition of single family dwelling? Is that uh like a duplex? Is that two different single family dwellings? And if it's a multi-unit property, uh, I guess, what's the what's the limit on the, in the parcel of the number of units that are in there that can be counted as single family dwellings? So if I have a multifamily unit with thirty units in it, or is each one of those a single family unit?
Well, the reason why I was asking for a single family homes, not multifamily, um, is because we do have um several apartment complexes and thi- this is, I'm I'm using my district specifically, like as an example, we have several apartment complexes. So if I have an apartment complex, it's got thirty apartments in it. Then what that does is it raises the base number of what the two percent is calculated on. And I feel like um what the base number of what it should be calculated on should be single family homes. So that's single family attached, single family detached. Um, and and I, and I, I'm not sure how townhouses are calculated. If those are, I think those are also considered a a single family. But um I was wanting to leave the the apartment numbers out of it.
That makes sense. And I I I think that I just wanna make sure we have a good working definition of that. So that when we're looking at the numbers that it's, uh, when you have a triplex or a quite, you know, a fourplex, uh, those would each be single family dwelling units. So I don't know if we have a working definition of that.
Ken, is that, are those numbers easy to pull up in our? I know, I think we've pulled up similar numbers in the past, but do we have good numbers that we can pull up by each district?
I I'm not sure I have a a perfect answer for that. Um, I would just note that just based on some back a napkin math, that that's probably gonna create some issues of non-conformity from the get-go. Uh, just to be advised of that, that uh, you know, my rough numbers of, based on my knowledge of the number of housing units that we have in the city, uh, dividing that by four um and making a a presumption that a certain number of those are not are are multifamily, that we're, you know, we're gonna be capping at, again, rough back a napkin math at about fifty uh STRs per council district. So um, I'm, uh, we're gonna be creating some issues of non-conformity from the get-go, I believe.
May, okay, so then maybe what I'll do is I'll I'll remove this consensus, but I will ask that staff come to us with um a calculation of what it would be in each district of single family homes. Um, what a two percent cap would look like and what a three percent cap would look like. Um, based on the definition of single family home that we've already discussed, single family detached, single family attached, leaving uh the apartments out. Um, I know that some of the numbers in district wanna go down once like Expedia is not allowed to own more than one and things like that, but um I I, so I guess I would ask that we ask staff to come back to us about what that number would really look like. I mean, at fifty sounds low, but it doesn't sound unreasonable to me, really. We're a pretty small area.
Thank you. I have uh Ms. Weaver, Ms. Hulte and Mr. Urban in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern, I I I agree with with Ms. Hoppy and and Mr. Urban on on this. However, what happens when that cap has been reached and people want to, you know, they didn't get to have their single family uh unit in the count? And now I'm concerned about what someone just brought up of of now I just wanna try and get the permit that exempts me from falling into that cap so that I can get what I think is fair. Does that make sense? I'm concerned about once the caps reached and we have another person who who moves into a district who has a a a un-owner occupied space, as I think I'm understanding it, and Ms. Hoppy, maybe you can clarify. So the cap would be reached. And let's say I haven't been involved in renting and I have a house that I'd like to put into rent, short term rental. Um, that's not the house that I'm living in. I basically am gonna go to the city and they're gonna say, no, the cap's been reached in your district. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, well, and I guess what I probably should have been more clear about too is that we um had already come to a consensus that um that the cap would apply after the initial um opening time for people to get um licensed. So within within the time that we that we give, which is the hundred and eighty days for initial compliance. Um, if you have not gotten compliant and then you come and the cap's been reached, then yeah, sorry, you're on a waitlist.
Don't you think that's gonna en- en- encourage people to just get the license regardless?
And you mean, just in case, just in case I decide I wanna make my house an STR ten years down the road? I don't think so.
Uh, I have Ms. Hulte and Mr. Urban in the queue.
Thank you. Uh, so using Ken's uh cocktail napkin math, I should keep cocktail napkins nearby during council meetings. Uh, so so if we're talking about this like high level math around a certain percentage that Ms. Hoppy's proposed coming out to about fifty non-owner occupied STRs per district. I mean, I think that actually sounds like a pretty reasonable number to me. That would be two hundred citywide. And, you know, and and a lot of the STRs are, you know, people renting out a guest bedroom or, you know, the, you know, mother-in-law basement that there is in their house. So um, I I just wanna voice, like, I think that actually sounds like a pretty reasonable target number. If it ends up around fifty, how we come up with that? I'm a little concerned about not including the apartments when we actually have provisions in here that allow for apartment units to take up actually big blocks of the STR. So I'd rather find a number that looks at all the housing units in the district and and maybe lower the percentage, but look at all of them. Because if we're allowing, you know, uh, an owner of a of sixteen plex to run out four of them as STRs, then that actually impacts the cap. So I feel like those numbers should be, should be included. Um, but I I think that target of fifty S sounds incredibly reasonable to me if it's for non-owner occupied per district. Thanks.
I have Mr. Urban next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what's the difference between a non-conforming short term rental and an illegal short term rental? Uh, as we go forward with this and someone has or has already reached their maximum of one owner occupied and one non-owner occupied, but they have additional uh units in the city. Do they have to cease that business and sell that property or turn it into a long-term rental? Or what's the uh, how how does that play out?
I mean, that would be, go ahead.
Go ahead, Scott.
And that would be impacted, um, as we were talking earlier about um the business license regulation. So if someone's at their maximum, then they're not permitted to operate a short term rental. And so then, um, I mean, they would be subject to those fees and fines for operating something without a license. Um, so I i- in that case, they would be incentivized at least to sell the property or to turn it into some other use.
So there would, there would be no grand grandfathering or uh non-conforming use or anything like that? It's, you can have one and the one non-owner occupied and one owner occupied. And if you have more than that, then you need to liquidate or do whatever you need to do, but you can't uh use that property for a short term rental.
I think the discussions around the caps, um, the the maximum number per person would still apply. I think the proposal, though, um, that was brought up earlier was that the cap itself would apply after the grace period ends. So the limit of one per person would still exist. Um, and we would be monitoring that as they're getting registered. But if for whatever reason, um, you know, so many people register that it's already over the cap, then I I don't know, Ken, am I explaining that well? I'm I'm trying to figure out what I'm saying.
I I think you are, uh, Mr. Cutler. Uh, and I and I would agree with what you've said. I think my my understanding would be that in the first instance, in terms of licensing, uh, you know, what are arguably, you know, some existing short term rentals out there, right? We'll all acknowledge, but but none of those are kind of legally non-conforming, right? They're just, they're not legal. Uh, we're we're proposing to license them. But in the first instance, uh, we would, we would license uh subject to the 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 one per STR host uh that's not owner occupied. So if in the process of of vetting those licenses, we determine that, you know, we have licenses that are for uh multiple owners, as we define it in the ordinance, that we would not license them. They'd have to. They'd have to pick and choose which ones they choose to license. Uh, but in terms of the overall numbers, um, if, you know, if we got to a point where, uh, we got enough licenses that were over a potential cap, that we would allow that to happen in the first instance, uh, during this initial round of, of licensure. It's a difficult question to answer.
Okay. Um, I, I think that gets me a little more comfortable with it. Um, as far as the notification, the neighbors, did we end up on a consensus on that?
Yeah, I have that we ended up on a consensus that the, um, STR owner would be responsible to notify the neighbors within a hundred feet with the emergency contact. And, um, I have a little checkmark, so we did get a consensus on that.
Okay, and then, uh, in the previous April sixth, uh, study session, we brought a consensus forward and it passed regarding the two-night minimum stay. Do we need to reiterate a, an additional consensus to make that stick, or h- how does this work?
I would say we already have that consensus, so if somebody doesn't want that to happen, then they should maybe make a consensus to change it.
So was that consensus because of the pandemic, though, or was that overall? Because I remember we were debating this, but like when we were talking about this back in April, um, you know, it was right after COVID had hit and we were concerned about people staying for short periods of time when there was essentially a travel ban. Um, so I, I, I'm not for, um, a minimum night's stay.
I, um, actually re-watched that entire meeting. It was really exciting, um, early last week. Um, and it, it was not, uh, it was not COVID-related. So, so the consensus stands, and so I would say if, if someone would like that consensus to change, then, um, they need to uh, make a consensus to change that.
Thank you. Um, I, I've lost track of where we are in consensuses, but I would, are we in the middle of one? Or can I propose my?
I was, I was trying to work on one on the caps, but I'm, I'm working on the language. So why don't you go ahead with yours while I finish that up?
Okay, I'd like to propose that we do not have a minimum night's stay requirement as part of our regulations of short-term rentals.
Well, we have a, a barely consensus, but we have four, four for that and three that did not raise their hands, so. While you're, while you're working on that, I wanted to go back to the apartment, uh, apartment exemption and ask for consensus that, um, in a maximum, that, uh, in a zone district may operate a maximum of four dwelling units or ten percent, whichever is greater or whichever is less, excuse me, on office complexes.
Can I, can I clarify that if I'm?
If you would, please.
So that was actually part of the original council consensus. Um, I believe the study session prior to April and that, that four number was landed on as part of a prior consensus, so we kept it. Um, but if you all are willing to potentially change that, um, I think that's something you're able to do. Um, I would say, though, that, um, that specifically also applies to mixed-use properties on our commercial corridors that are more commercial in nature, and, and those zone districts also allow hotels, hostels. Um, so having a restriction on the number of short-term rentals in a district that already permits, uh, a full hotel use might be an issue.
And the language, um, what I, I remember the consensus being in, um, that it was in mixed-use, uh, neighborhood and, um, commercial zones, but the language, it's in the memo, it says development in any zone district. So, um, perhaps if we can, um, make a consensus to change that back to the mixed-use neighborhood zones, um, mixed-use commercial and commercial zoning, C1 zoning, I believe, is all that we had. Um, Mayor, do you feel like that?
And you know, in District One, we have a lot of smaller apartment, apartment complexes. And, uh, and I don't think, I, I, I think it's good to, to keep those as, uh, long-term rental units rather than shifting them to necessarily short-term rental units.
I think that's helpful clarification.
You know, if you could, uh, work on language, something like that, if we have consensus on that.
And I, I can go back and re-look at the language, but I'm almost positive that it was mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial and C1. Um, keeping all of that in, in basically our, our major corridors, and I, an example of that would be the Barta House.
Okay.
Um, so, so with, with that clarification, um, I'm, I'm going, I'm going back to the, I'm gonna go back to the cap. I'd like to ask for consensus that after the initial, um, after the initial period to grace period to, um, get licensed and registered as a short-term rental, we initiate a cap of two percent per district of all non-owner occupied licenses to be calculated by the number of single-family dwellings in the district, meaning single-family attached, single-family detached, and townhouses.
Excluding multifamily.
Excluding multifamily. Remembering that the four, remembering that the four per apartment complex are, are not apartment complexes that are in residential districts. They're in mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial, and C1.
All right, do we have consensus on that? Three, four, five. We have consensus on that. We are now, we're now about two hours and, and fifteen minutes into this meeting. So if we're not, uh, i- if, if you don't have any more consensus on this, then we will move on and, and hopefully finish this item and finish our meeting. Otherwise, we're gonna take a break. What's the pleasure? Do we have any more discussion on this item? Okay, thank you very much. That was a good discussion. You have the, uh, Mr. Cutler, and, and Ken, you have the information you think you need to, to bring this to council as a, as an ordinance? I believe we do. We'll, we'll bring it forward, uh, forthwith. Give it a, give it a try and we'll go from there. Thank you very much for a good, uh, good discussion, good report.
Thanks, Scott. Ken?
Thank you. We'll go to item number three, staff reports, and start with Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do something real quick. Um, as you know, the county, uh, issued their mitigation plan um, to reduce the COVID numbers in the county. So I asked staff to look into, um, what we can do as a city to help, um, with enforcement of that mitigation plan. And Ally and the chief had a discussion today, and really, and maybe Ally can speak to this, but we're really looking at, um, kind of public messaging as much as possible, um, our mask program to see if, um, we need to get masks out to get into businesses and folks. So Ally, do you, you have anything you want to add to that? Um, you know, we're not gonna be able to, we don't have the resources to go into every store and make sure that, um, customers and/or, uh, people working at these stores are wearing a mask. Um, we just, we just cannot do that. Um, but we'll, we'll do as much as we can to, to get the information out and to support the county. But Ally, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think our, what we'd like to do is really, um, at, at the, you know, like, we sort of started thinking back to what did we do at the beginning of all this? And we, we did a lot of direct outreach to our business community, and obviously part of um, reducing the, the spread and reducing the seven-day moving average is to keep our businesses open at at least the capacities they are today, right? And not, and not in any way slide backward and, and keep our kids in school. That's really seems to be public health and the county's focus. And so, um, what we'd like to do is really is go back to some real d- direct outreach to businesses. What do, you know, what do you need? What ideas do you have? What tools do you need? Getting messaging directly into their hands. Um, again, like Patrick said, reactivate the mask program. Um, you know, it's challenging because I think we need, uh, the chief and I were talking, and I know he's, he's still on the line here, um, about we need the county to sort of let us know what, what they might need, and that is certainly the model, I think Westminster, for example, has been working with, uh, tri-county health department um, on, on how they can help with enforcement. But right now, we don't have that from, from public health yet, right? Like, you know, any, any other needs that they might have for, for enforcement, and our, as, and our police department doesn't play that role of enforcing public health orders. So we plan to attack it by really good strategic messaging with direct outreach to our businesses.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, thank you for those staff reports. Uh, any elected officials matters? Mr. Urban, and then Ms. Hoppy.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Uh, along those lines, uh, regarding the public health orders, uh, I, I feel like the health department's kind of jumped the shark in, in some ways, and that people aren't paying attention to this whatsoever. And whether it's the election or other distractions, uh, the outreach that I've done, people just frankly don't care enough uh, to read the public health order, and not to say that they should, they shouldn't, uh, they absolutely should follow the public health order. But I think there's a malaise, just a lack of, uh, concern in the community regarding these new public health orders. And, uh, I don't know what the best outreach, uh, should be or, or could be, but, uh, that's just what I'm seeing and hearing from folks is uh, that they've, uh, that, that there's not simply paying attention to these new public health orders. So I, that's, uh, and I've reached out to the public health department regarding several clarifications that I've needed, and I've gotten some clarifications. But that was after mixed messages that I got from them on, uh, some questions that I had. So, uh, I, I, I just have some concerns about how this is gonna be carried out and whether people are really gonna be paying attention to it, unfortunately.
Yeah, we, we agree, and, you know, hence again, you know, I think with really real help, reaching out to our businesses and starting there and seeing if we can get some good information into their hands to help, I think, I think is a, is a good strategy to start. I, I, I agree. Um, and the county's, you know, try, trying their best. They've, um, their, their campaign that they've launched together, We Go Forward. Um, we'll be playing those PSAs on Channel Eight. Um, we'll be reiterating, reiterating the messaging, six key steps. It's, um, you know, in some ways, I think what people have always, always, always been hearing, sort of packaged in a new way. So I agree that it's, um, that people are tired of this, and so we need to sort of really make that impact, that, you know, this is gonna save our businesses, right? Um, so that's our goal.
Thank you for everything you guys are doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Urban.
Have a comment, Ms. Hoppy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thanks to everybody for, um, walking down the road on the STRs. I've been on council now five years, and we spent several years at the beginning of that kicking the can down the road. And it's really nice to have picked up the can, and we're actually walking it across the line. So thanks for everybody's, um, time and patience and, um, hard work on that.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. I, I just want to thank city staff. I attended a Let's Talk Southeast Wheat Ridge session this week and am just continued to be incredibly impressed with, uh, just the, the attention that our city staff is giving to listening to neighbors and cultivating constructive conversation amongst neighbors about what's important to them at the neighborhood level. And having listened to one in Bel Air and one in Southeast Wheat Ridge, you know, very different neighborhoods, very different interests. And I just think this is great, the city's doing it. And again, I just am so impressed with our staff. It's, uh, neighbors are really excited that Ken Johnstone's on the call and Lauren, and, you know, they, they really feel heard. And I just kudos to everyone for, for pulling that off. I think it's amazing. And then I just want to mention, uh, to Councilwoman Weaver, that District Two is looking forward to welcoming the goats on Wednesday. And, uh, we will properly greet them as they make their way across Kipling over to the side of, of the city. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hulteen, I just wanted to make perhaps one clarification. I think it was East Wheat Ridge and not specifically Southeast Wheat Ridge.
All right, I grew up in Southeast Denver, so, yes, thank you, it was East.
Okay, and there is a difference between the two, is?
There is, there is definitely a difference between the two.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, Mr. Kirkpatrick, do I see your hand waving in the, okay?
Out in the desert.
You know, yes, I thought you were saying adios.
As a brief reminder to anyone who may be listening or anyone who may ask you in the next twenty-four hours, it is still not too late to vote in the general election. At this point, you must do it in person. You can do it in Anderson Park, you can do it at City Hall, and at many other locations around Jefferson County, Denver County, et cetera. You can even get in line before seven PM tomorrow night, register to vote on the spot and cast the ballot, even though you have just registered. So anyone who asks you, anyone you know who has not voted, um, suggested them very strongly that it's time to vote. Because seven o'clock tomorrow night, that's it.
You, you can still drop the ballot off, though, right, Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Up till seven PM. If you have filled out, you haven't put it in the drop box, absolutely, you can bring it to the drop boxes. Uh, City Hall, Anderson Park, uh, Prospect Park, and what's the one I'm forgetting? Oh, the rec center. Um, you can drop your ballot, completed ballot until seven PM tomorrow. They will literally lock the drop boxes at seven PM on the dot.
Very much. Uh, additional public officials matters. All right, and it sounds like that concludes our, uh, work for tonight. Thank you all very much. Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank the people that, uh, that came and spoke to us, uh, had our citizens' right to speak. Thanks to our, uh, SCL, uh, members, uh, Mr. Chung and Mr. Wickland for joining us. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cutler and Ms. Muculak for, uh, for good presentations on your, uh, on your portions of this, uh, meeting. We will be back here on November the ninth at seven o'clock for our full council meeting. So, uh, take care, be well, until then, and thank you all for being here. With that, we will stand adjourned. Good night.
You will.